Be open and transparent about both the city's infrastructure, financing needs, and potential revenue sources that might help bridge the city's budget gap. Although a number of things have evolved since those initial meetings, staff have been working diligently to provide regular updates to key community groups in the chamber regardless of these issues. After the April 20th City Council study session where HDL outlined its proposed options to modernize the city's business license tax as the way to raise the revenue for road improvements and other city services, the City Council asked staff to work with the chamber and business community to see if a certain alternative financial model could be developed that meets the city's financial needs and at the same time, set it at an amount that most businesses could accept. There were many discussions regarding many options and based on feedback from the industrial based businesses, staff developed a financial model known as Model 7 since it was the accepted by most businesses. Since its development, the business community has had a number of questions about Model 7 that have been answered by staff and our consultants formally and informally. In fact, we've had our latest meeting with the Chamber Working Group last night and you can see this slide that is from last night. And our staff and consultants will continue to answer new questions until the November election if the City Council decides to move on the measure on the ballot. Furthermore, since the industrial zone businesses have a desire to see the city's plan to have a plan for fixed commercial roads, we therefore provide them a 10-year commercial road work priority plan. Tonight, we need direction from the City Council to determine if they want to move forward with putting Model 7 or some amended version of it on the November election ballot. But first, our consultants are going to go to three things. One, summarize the mechanics of Model 7. Two, provide an overview of the community survey that measures the likeliness that a ballot measure would pass to increase the city's business license tax. And three, identify the next steps and timelines on putting the ballot measure on the November general election. At this time, I'd like to introduce Eric Myers from HDL to go over Model 7. And we'll also have attorney Mark Mandel to assist him with questions with Model 7. So Eric is remote and so Eric, go ahead and begin if you can hear us.
I can hear you. Thank you, Ray. And appreciate the opportunity to speak with you as members of the council.
Okay, let's proceed.
Sure. Okay, what's on your screen right now is the current model that we're using. We're putting before the council for consideration. Basically, businesses would get divided into this model into six categories. Professionals are lawyers, accountants, doctors, et cetera. Contractors are going to be, who have a license for construction contracting, those sorts of things are working on building, are licensed to do work and on buildings in the city and have projects. And then basically, other than those, every business that's not down the lower category is going to be either a general business or a service. And since those are taxed at the same rate, it's basically one category. Then we are not taxing landlords. We're only taxing the business activities occurring in the city. So a decision was made that it would make sense rather than tax the, if you have a business that's operating a building, rather than have a tax on the owner of the building and that tax on the tenant for doing whatever business they are, say being a restaurant. We just are taxing the restaurant and not the owner of the restaurant, which also means that the tax on that combined space will be the same whether you have an owner operated restaurant or a restaurant that's renting from a landlord. And this also means that since a lot of your commercial leases are triple net, where anything we tax to landlord winds up being passed down to the tenant anyway. This avoids having us tax a tenant, tax landlord, effectively taxing the tenant twice. Then the other category is what we call industrial business activities. That's warehouses, wholesaling distribution, manufacturing, light industry, transportation, truck storage, truck terminals, packing and processing activities, anything of that nature. And to the extent a business is in one of these categories, especially industrial activity, any associated offices that are part of that business are still in that category. So if you have a warehouse and then there's an office associated with the warehouse for managing it, that's still part of industrial business activities because what we're looking at is the purpose of the business. This isn't tied to what the zoning is, it's tied to the actual use. Those top activities, the professionals, the contractors, and the general businesses and services are taxed based on their gross receipts. We state this as a dollar amount per thousand dollars of gross receipts. The professionals would be paying $2 per thousand, contractors $1.50, everyone else 75 cents per thousand dollars of gross receipts. The reason why you have a higher rate for professionals is because professionals tend to operate at a much higher margin than restaurants or stores. So this is getting closer to taxing actual income rather than, and the problem is, under state law, we can't do an income tax. We can only do a gross receipts tax. The difference being that gross receipts essentially the money that comes in cash register, whereas income is the money that comes in less your expenses. And since that gap, the margin is so much higher for professionals than for other categories of businesses, it makes sense to tax them at a higher rate. For the industrial business activities, the tax is based on square foot, square footage. For everyone except truck yard and truck storage, that's going to be the square footage of the useful building floor plan, of usual building space in their building. So that would include things like mezzanines if there's an office on mezzanine in their building. It wouldn't include things like venting space, mechanical rooms and things like that. They're just kind of part of a building. And then for the truck yards and truck storage businesses, we'd be measuring essentially the square footage of the space that is used for truck parking. There would be a minimum tax for any taxpayer of $25, a maximum tax of $50,000. So what the taxpayer would do is calculate their tax pursuant to this table. If the tax would be lower than 25, they pay 25. If the tax would be higher than 50,000, they pay 50. And the square footage tax will be subject to an annual CPI adjustment based on the published CPI, but no less than 1% and no more than 5% in any year. And really, that is my presentation. I'm available for questions and Eric may or may not be depending on the state of the technology.
Madam Mayor, we're still having some technical difficulties. So what we're going to attempt is use my mobile phone to have Eric speak. So if you could allow me a moment while we try that.
Madam Mayor and Council, do you have any questions for Mark on the model?
How are you doing? So where did we come up with these? How do we rank in other cities compared to where we're trying to establish ourselves at to where other cities are at? And also, well, where do we rank? And then what is the increase from where we're at today of, let's say for services? What would we get from a restaurant from the business license fee to what it would be now?
Eric would have more information about comparable cities. Sometimes it can be hard to compare different cities because you're using a different taxable base. So it's very hard, and this is what we're going to run into with answering your next question about comparing opposed tax to current tax, is it can be very hard to compare tax based on employees or a flat tax with tax based on gross receipts because businesses may have a lot of employees but not low gross receipts. Those would be businesses that just aren't bringing in that much money per employee. On the other hand, you can have businesses that have almost no employees but have a huge amount of revenue. So.
Like, well, my question, like, so for, let's just take services, let's say a restaurant. I say it's Maggie's or Giezer's that does $2 million a year in gross receipts. For this model, it would be somewhere around $1,800.
$1,500.
$1,500 to do, for them to get a business license, right?
That's correct.
What are they paying right now?
Well, it would depend on their number of employees, but it's probably in the $200 to $400 range.
So that would be almost seven times the amount of, we would increase their business license fee for this model.
Madam Mayor, we do have the consultant Eric Myers who can go through my phone to speak. And I think there was a question from Councilman Sarno about how we compare. So I'm going to try to put him on if you can hear it. Eric, go ahead and speak, see if it works.
Eric, can you hear me, Ray?
Yes.
Okay, so I think Mark's given a really good answer. I would say on these particular rates, you're going to be a little bit lower than, and so very competitive. The .75 is, per thousand, is a pretty low rate. We normally with our clients see around a dollar per thousand. So it's a little bit lower than what we see on average. There are some cities in the LA area that are at 80 cents. So you're even a little bit lower than them. For professionals, I mean, if we go up to LA, for example, it's going to be much higher. Up in the LA area, you're going to see these rates up at $4 or $5 an hour. So I think these are very competitive rates.
Madam Mayor, may I have a question?
Mark, LA is in Santa Fe Springs, though. What about the cities that are comparable to our city?
I think that Eric.
I'm Eric, I'm sorry.
Yes, so.
I mean, we're not, why are we comparing ourselves to LA if we're not LA?
Did you hear that question?
I did. I apologize. We are not comparing the city of Santa Fe Springs to the city of LA. We're asking about the competitiveness of these rates for these kinds of businesses, right? And you see rates, I mean, for these kinds of businesses, these are the kinds of rates that you see and higher in many areas. So in the original tax study, LA was not one of our reference cities as such. But when the question is focused on, are these, where did we get these rates? And are they reasonable for these kinds of businesses? That's what I was trying to answer.
Are there any other questions from our council?
So we're going to go into the, there's no questions more about the Model 7. We're going to talk about the polling and we need to get the other consultant on an audio. It's just like this. And I don't know if you have that option, Joy, to get Rick on. Okay, just give us one moment here. We're going to have to do the same thing with her phone.
Before, could we still talk about some things before she's getting that?
Sure.
So I would like to see kind of how this plays out for us. I know we're not comparing apples to apples here, but I would like to see a breakdown of professionals, contractors, general business services, what they pay right now compared to how far, where they're going to be at after this. Because I think that would really help us visualize the jump of what these costs really are. Because when you're talking seven times the amount of money that somebody's going to be asking to pay just like that, it's going to be really hard for some businesses that might not be able to afford that.
Sure. And I don't know, I know we mentioned this in some of our one-on-one meetings. You know, we now do for the number of employees we have. And so there's some inequities there where, for example, say you had a restaurant of 10 employees that make a half a million dollars a year and a law firm that has 10 employees that makes $5 million a year, they pay exactly the same. So there's inequities right now amongst ours. But I hear what you're saying, but there's some issues with our existing system, which is very antiquated, over 30 years old. So let me ask, let me ask the question here with Eric. Is that something we can get? Or maybe it's more internally with Travis. Can we get what they're paying now, what they would be paying later?
Well, for our existing system, we would have the number of employees. So we know what businesses are paying now. We would be having to guess at what a business's revenue was. We don't currently have that data. But we could assume a certain level of revenue and project if this level of revenue, this is what the business license.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably the best way to approach the type of information you're looking for would be to create some typical businesses and, you know. So a restaurant that has X employees and has X revenue a year, pays X under the old system would pay X under the new system. We don't have the ability to say this specific rest, this specific taxpayer would pay, pays X now, would pay Y later because we don't know their gross receipts. And also, because I'm not sure if it would be legally permissible, but it certainly would be a great idea for us to make a list of all of our taxpayers and you'll make that public. And we can do a comparison where we look at the total amount of tax revenue we're paying now from a class of businesses and the total under the new system. But that won't really tell you very much about what's happening to any individual businesses because, you know, some businesses will go up a little, some will go up more, some will go down a little. I mean, ultimately, I think we're doing two things here. We're shifting to a new basis, which means that the money, absent everything else, even if we're going to try and raise the same amount of money, some people would go up, some people would go down. Then we also are increasing the total amount of revenue we're getting some, which means if we weren't doing that other shift, everyone would be going up a little bit. And I think we're intentionally raising the tax burden on the industrial business activities over what it currently is because the perception is right now, since those tend to be businesses of relatively low number of employees, where, and they tend to, they're believed to have a large impact on your municipal services, your roads and such. There's a perception of right now, those businesses aren't paying their fair share. So we're intentionally raising the amount of revenue that you'll get from them as it grew. And if you look at this chart.
Hey, Mark, can you speak right into the microphone? Can you bring it closer to you? You can move it towards you.
I am really bad at talking into microphones. I apologize. And if you look at the chart, you'll see that the vast majority of your tax revenue from this system is going to be from those industrial business activities. You know, 6.3 million of 7.1 million we project to be getting is going to be from that category. And I wouldn't be the one who's producing these numbers. But it seems to me that that's, those are the possibilities in terms of what kind of numbers we get.
I'm going to ask Eric also, do you have any thoughts on the comparisons that the council member is asking? Any comments of that?
Yes, I mean, in the original study on pages 24 and 25, we did some of extensive sort of hypotheticals. We could easily add to that, some of the Model 7 results will be significantly less in most of these categories, actually in all of them. The rates have gone down in Model 7 from where they were previously. So if that's something that we were directed to do, that would be fairly straightforward to do, right?
Okay. So at this point, Joy, do we have Rick on the line? Unless there's any more questions on the topic of Model 7, we can go to the survey now?
Just real quick, when it comes to, I know that we're making a comparison. So if we can, I guess this question might be for Travis or anybody who can answer it. When's the last time we raised any fees? I know, like, you know, just to give the example, I know when we did our water, water tax and because of 20 years or whatever it may be that, you know, council didn't give the directive, you know, and because of the cost of living, you know, nobody ever raised the rate. And then, of course, what did we have to do? In the end, we had to raise it a substantial amount, which kind of seems similar to what we're doing now. So I just wanted to see what's that comparison? And when's the last time we've raised it or what are we doing there?
My knowledge, we haven't raised the actual tax for the business license, the.
The business license, yeah.
The per employee tax, to my knowledge, that's part of the municipal code. I believe it's at least 30 years old, if it's ever been updated.
So we could say at least 30 years we haven't raised anything?
Well, there is a service fee component to the business license. That's part of our fee study that has gone up over time. I believe that's $35 per license now. But the actual tax per employee has not changed, to my knowledge.
So through the cost of living and where we're at now, you know, I just want to make sure that we are either close or if we're too low, we're too high, then so we can sort that out. Like I said, because, you know, when people looked at our water rates, you know, three years, four years, we had to tax a substantial amount, 9.5% for three years straight. And then we had to go another 6% on the fourth year and then from, just to even catch up, right? And we all know we had to do that. And the thing is, when it comes to these type of things, there are difficult things to do. But we cannot compensate for, you know, for these monies if we're not collecting. I mean, no matter what, we have to collect to move forward. So just if you could look at that, maybe use the same water rate study comparison on how they did that to make the comparison. Because I do believe it was, what, 20 years that they didn't touch the water at all? And that's why we had to, close to 20 years, I don't know for sure. But if we can, just so we know where we at in comparison. Because I think if we make the comparison to city of LA, that's not going to give us. Well, Travis is our finance guy. He's saying 30 years it hasn't. No, no, I'm just saying the comparison, they can use that to help them out. Or no, when was the last, when the water rate, when did we, when was it last raised before we raised it? I know it was like two years before, but where it was actually. Was it over like 17, 20 years?
It wasn't that long. They were small.
There were small increments? But here we not received one small increment is what we're seeing. Okay, so in 30 years, we haven't received one small increment. I just want that to be stated, that's why.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I think, I have the same recognition as Travis, which is that this is hardwired into your municipal code and hasn't been changed in decades. So, and this is, the current tax is stated as a dollar amount.
Yes.
Per employee, which means that it doesn't automatically, it doesn't reflect inflation changes. One of the improvements we're recommending here is that a gross receipts tax automatically adjusts itself for inflation since it's stated as a dollar amount per thousand dollars of gross receipts. And then we do have an automatic inflation adjustment in the square footage. I caution about making the direct comparison between this process and your water rates because the water rates are a special fund. So what's happening is all of your water costs have to be funded by your water rates. It's like centrigame grants.
Yeah, I'm just using that as an example. I'm not saying to make the comparison. I'm just saying, like, just to specify, because it was a while before we did that and we had to catch up. So here, you know, if we haven't done anything in 30 years, it's saying we need to catch up. So it's not like we're doing this because we want to, we're doing this because we have to. And if you look at it, I mean, it's not our residents paying for this fee. It's, you know, it's our business community.
Absolutely. All I'm, all I'm saying is that it's slightly different in that your target is to raise the amount of money.
That's fine.
In the water system, whereas here, you're having a choice of how much revenue you want to be getting from this tax to go towards your needs.
That's fine.
So certainly you want to keep up with inflation, but you may want to be raising more from the fee.
Yeah, then of course, we could always look at the potential. I mean, I know I was waiting for you guys to finish, but, you know, I mean, the potential of us having a staggered system with, you know, with our smaller businesses being a little different, you know. So I know Jay had brought that up, but I just, or Councilmember Sarno. So, I mean, when it comes to our smaller businesses, I do know that we got to do our best to try to help them out. So, I mean, our larger businesses, I do want to help them out too. But I do know that when it comes to what's happening in our streets, our roads and our community, we do need the help. So thank you, guys.
So at this time, unless there's other questions, Madam Mayor, we'll go to the presentation from FM3. So that's Rick Sklarz who will be speaking on that. And I think he's going to be using Joy's phone.
Rick, you should be okay to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Rick, you can go ahead with your presentation. We can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. So I'll just ask somebody who's controlling the slides to move ahead and I'll go through. So, so good afternoon, evening, council members. My name is Rick Sklarz and I'll take you through the results of the survey. I have a brief presentation here. So you can see, this is how we conducted the research. We're in the, conducting the survey from June 14 through the 30th. We do it via telephone interviews, landline and cells, as well as contacting people via email and text messaging so that they can take the survey online to ensure we get in touch with as many people as possible. We did the survey in both English and Spanish. You'll see some results from prior surveys. FM3 is conducted on behalf of the city. So we can go to the next slide. We're just going to sort of overview, big picture, the mood of your electorate as it stands today. And we asked the question of, do you think things in Santa Fe Springs are generally in the right direction? Or do you feel things are off on the wrong track? And you can see today in the G22 bar, 54% say right direction. That's the blue portion, 28% say we're on track, 17% say don't know. And this compares pretty closely with where things were four years ago in the spring of 2018. And all things considered, given what has happened over the past several years, these numbers are pretty good and stand pretty, pretty, put the city of Santa Fe Springs kind of in a unique position. We heard you talking about, you know, your rates, but I can tell you from research we do in communities around LA County as well as across the state of California, most cities have seen these right direction, wrong track numbers decline, both because of the pandemic and the last, you know, year or so of economic difficulty a lot of people are facing. But all in all, your city has held up pretty well over the past four years. Okay, go to the next slide. And that same sort of consistency is also holding true for when we ask your voters to rate their quality of life as residents of Santa Fe Springs. And again, today, we can see a total of 70% are saying excellent or good. And that looks very similar to where you were four years ago. And two-thirds, 67%, said excellent or good. Just three in 10 are saying fair or poor. And in reality, that big portion of the bar, which is fair, is not entirely negative. And really, only 3% of the respondents are telling us their quality of life in Santa Fe Springs is poor. So all in all, again, these numbers sort of are not the norm that we're seeing in other communities around the state these days. Next slide. Job ratings for cities' public safety departments and city government agencies. Here you can see fire department overwhelmingly positive, excellent, good job. The dark blue is excellent, the light blue is good job. And you can see the fire department over 80%, 9% fair. Virtually nobody, you can hardly see any red in those bars for the fire department because very few people would say the city's fire department is doing a poor job. The police department, as in all cities, and you can see historically, fire departments will always be more popular than police departments. That's just the nature of these questions. But the Santa Fe Springs Police Department is still overwhelmingly positive. 61% say they're doing excellent or good job. This compares pretty favorably again, four years ago. So despite a lot of other counties, attitudes towards police changing pretty significantly in some parts of the state. In your community, police are still generally thought of very highly. City government overall, a majority say excellent or good job and no change over the past four years. And again, the city council, just under half today are saying excellent or good jobs. Not a big change there. There are some more people who say only fair, so maybe a little more mixed today than four years ago. But you can still see a pretty solid job rating as it was four years. But you can still see a pretty solid, uh, job rating as it was four years ago. Go to the next slide. Uh, in terms of what's on our minds today, not a surprise to anyone. Price of gasoline, inflation, and rising prices are sort of what we are all thinking of, what we're concerned about. You can see here at this dark red, the percentage of people who say the price of gasoline is extremely serious problem. Above sixty percent, we add another twenty-six percent who say very serious problem. So again, the price of gasoline today is a major problem. Uh, and again, these are really high numbers. We don't typically see numbers in the sixties for extremely serious problem. Uh, so you can just tell the severity of what people are feeling, you know, high gas prices. To be honest, we, we all know gas prices are starting to come down a little bit. We've seen that happen the last couple of weeks, uh, so the survey was taken. Uh, we're still at a pretty high rate and we're seeing this with other research, gas prices still, uh, a pri- a priority concern for most voters. In your community, not surprisingly, being in sort of the Californian, L.A. County area, homelessness, the lack of affordable housing, the cost of housing, all big issues. Uh, this is true for your city as well as virtually every city across L.A. County. So you can see all of those numbers, when you compare them to four years ago, uh, the dark red portion of that bar is up, you know, anywhere about eight, nine points on those three issues. And then if you go to the right side, that combination of extremely or very serious, you can see all of those issues are at double digits almost, uh, particularly for homelessness and the cost of housing. So three out of four are saying those are extremely serious problems in your community. Next slide. Uh, just want to put, point out a few items here on this, uh, slide.
Hey, Rick?
Yes.
You are fading in and out a little bit.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you can
Yeah, let me, let me try to keep the phone a little closer to my mouth. The property crimes, uh, you could see about three out of four saying that's an extremely or very serious problem. If you go down a couple, uh, slot, in the slide a little bit, you could see crime in general. That's at sixty-six percent extremely or very serious. So, uh, crime, property crimes, a little more of a concern to your voters these days than sort of crime, big picture generally. But what's noticeable also about crime in general is it is at two-thirds extremely or very serious problem today versus fifty-four percent, uh, several years ago. So obviously, concern about crime is rising, we've seen that in a lot of communities across the state, and yours is no different. Just on directing you to the bottom of the screen, uh, potholes, deteriorating streets and roads. That is up ten points from where it was four years ago. Today, six and ten Santa Fe Springs voters are saying that is a major problem in their community. Okay, so we can go to the next slide. And in terms of some other issues worth noting, just the condition of the local economy. Uh, you know, we did this survey, uh, in June of twenty twenty-two, and we have the survey from June of twenty-ten. And it's interesting to sort of compare those two numbers. June of twenty-ten, we're still sort of feeling the effects of the Great Recession, sort of a very slow recovery. And we seem to be in a similar mood these days, uh, with how we're feeling about the local economy. So it's sort of an interesting comparison of where we were today. Uh, and then just right below that, the condition of streets and roads. You can also see that is up pretty significantly from where it was four years ago. Uh, forty-five percent said that was a major problem in twenty-eighteen. Today, that's over fifty percent, uh, extremely or very serious problem. Okay, so we can go to the next slide. So now we'll get into, uh, the, the ballot measure and need for funding. So if we go to the next slide, on this slide, we asked the question before we even asked about a ballot measure. Do you think there, the city has a need for funding to provide local services to, to residents? And you can see here, uh, today, the need is at seventy-nine percent who say the city has a great or something for additional funding to provide residents with services. So sixteen percent say the need is a little or no real need. So most of your voters today still think, uh, there is a need for additional funding. And, and that'll sort of carry sort of their support to a certain extent, because the, the sort of sense is there is a need out there. And if we go to the next slide, this is a summary of the ballot measure that was used in the survey. And it describes the, the, uh, business license tax measure. So you've all seen this before, just wanted to remind you. So if you go to the next slide, after they're provided with that summary, we asked them, would you vote yes or no if the election were held today? And we asked, agree of yes or no? And you can see here, a total of sixty-eight percent would vote in favor. Uh, but the voters that we consider more sort of certain are, you know, more likely to vote yes or no, that definitely or probably yes, is sixty percent. And so that's sort of more of the core vote, the, who would support it. The undecided lean yes voters, they're, they're less committed, uh, depending on sort of what's going on in their lives or what they hear or see, they could be persuaded one way or the other. On the no side, we've got a total of one in four, twenty-six percent who are voting no. But the definitely no is only fifteen percent, which is half as much as the definitely yes. And that's a noteworthy number, because when you're trying to pass a ballot measure, if the definitely no vote is significantly higher, as it is sometimes in other communities, we've seen, uh, it can be harder to reach that fifty percent threshold that this ballot measure requires. But here, the definitely no is pretty, pretty subdued at only fifteen percent. Okay, so we go to the next slide. On these next several slides, respondents, do you raise, want to know if this ballot measure could be used? Would you rate that as an extremely important use of the funds? Very important, somewhat not too important. The dark blue is extremely, the middle grade blue is very, and the light blue is somewhat important. I think what's notable here is, right off the bat, I mean, these are pretty strong numbers. Uh, it, over fifty percent say it is extremely important to maintain city streets and intersections to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion. And you've got majority saying it's extremely important to fund proactive policing to prevent crime, maintain nine-one-one response times, uh, ensure the city can respond effectively to natural disasters, emergency situations, upgrading fire equipment. So, you know, you have local infrastructure, the streets and roads, and then sewer systems as well. You know, making sure the city's water supply is protected, as well as improving parks, community centers, the aqua- aquatic center, potentially. Uh, those are all high priorities, and we have public safety. So it's sort of the core thing, that voters are highly prioritized. We can go to the next slide. And again, these are just sort of more examples of how wording or phrasing can respond to voters. Uh, but just sort of right in the middle of that, potholes and repairing city streets. Again, you've got eighty-four percent extremely or very important. So the basic concept of what a city's providing, you know, fixing the roads, providing public safety, maintaining, you know, vital services, that's what this ballot measure does. And that's what your voters are responding to, their priorities. We go to the next slide. So we did test some arguments, some statements in the context of the survey, so we can move on to the next slide. And, uh, trying to be brief, not providing all the wording, but there's a series of statements replicated in the survey. Public education, providing the, the community with more information as to why the council and city government may think that this is something, this ballot measure makes sense and it's appropriate for a community. And on the left side of the screen is the, those words sort of get to a theme of each statement. The first one, accountability, that there's, uh, oversight, uh, audits that are required if this ballot measure is approved to make sure funds are used correctly. Infrastructure, the city has more than one hundred million dollars in needs with respect to repairing local streets and roads. Fair share, making sure the businesses, we went through the tax rates a few minutes ago. Making sure the, the businesses, particularly those who are the larger businesses and contribute, contribute fairly, uh, if they are in the city and making sure they provide, provide the services that residents, uh, prioritize. And trucks and road impacts, uh, you know, the big trucks, that the impact they have on roads is disproportionate. And it's only fair that those companies that, you know, use the city roads, uh, also contribute their fair share. So provided those statements were provided, and then on the next slide, can see after respondents hear this, this information, when we simulate this public, uh, education program, support not only increases, it's up over seventy percent, but it intensifies as well. We have more voters in that definitely and probably, uh, yes category, and fewer voters are voting no. So the education program, this might suggest, the more you provide information and communicate the needs to your public, uh, the more likely they, they understand and appreciate the, the rationale behind the ballot measure. And if we go to the next slide, we did test, and again, just sort of trying to be quick here, some arguments against in late, you know, some pretty standard things we're hearing these days about high taxes, price inflation, as well as, you know, just sort of typical anti-government spending attitude. A lot of voters feel this, that government is spending too much. So we tested those statements as well, and you can see support comes down, uh, in, you know, after hearing those types of statements. Sixty-two percent voted in favor, thirty percent opposed, but clearly still a solid majority, well above fifty percent for a, uh, simple majority measure as the one tested in the survey was. And then if we go to the next slide and the final slide, ask this one. Just some simple conclusions here, uh, to summarize. The opinions of Santa Fe Springs as a community overall, the quality of life, city government, uh, remains highly positive despite all the trouble of the last several years. Uh, and these numbers are quite good relative to where other communities in this region, uh, currently stand. Gas prices, inflation, uh, homelessness and housing remain sort of core, core concerns of your voters, uh, as they have been probably for the last several years. But obviously, gas prices and inflation have now taken a, a primary concern over housing and homelessness. Crime is rising as a concern today, uh, and we also saw that condition of streets and roads is up as a bigger concern today than it had been four years ago. Uh, just went through it, but a solid majority votes in favor of the ballot measure based on the simulated language they hear. And then they respond actively to public education information, uh, that sort of provides the rationale, gives them more information about the ballot measure, uh, and helps them assess its, its, whether they think it's worthwhile or not. Just saw that there is some capacity for a potential no campaign to diminish support, uh, but that still remains uh, in the sixty percent range, so over the fifty percent mark. So just lastly here, these results demonstrate Santa Fe Springs voters regard a local business license tax ballot as an appropriate and reasonable, uh, way to address important neighborhood priorities and would be willing to vote in favor of such a measure, provided the council deemed it, uh, something that they want to put on the ballot. So I'll stop there, uh, that's the completion of my presentation.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to entertain questions now or let Joy kind of wrap up our next steps and then, um, take questions at that point, or let the community speak, and we speak afterwards, it's, it's up to you.
Okay, do we have any questions from our council?
All right, we're going to let, uh, Joy Coomer from Pops and Measures kind of talk about the next steps and what we really need to do to get this moving forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, council members. The next steps, it's really just one slide here, because we are coming up on the deadline of when you would need to qualify for the November election, um, in order for this to appear on the ballot for voters. Uh, that deadline is August twelfth, that's when the resolution would have to be delivered to the county. Uh, you do have a council meeting before that date. So backing up to tonight, um, tonight is when we had an opportunity to review the survey results. That's just a piece of the information, as the team has been working together over a couple, um, months now. Um, we would like to work with the city team to develop, um, an informational mail piece that could go out to the community to help provide some information about, uh, the council considering moving forward with the business license, uh, tax amendment. So that would be something we would work on with the, um, city team over the next week. We'll continue outreach as we do that as well. And then, uh, again, the team will work to, uh, with Mark and everyone else to finalize the resolution and ordinance uh, based on whatever direction the council were to provide, should they would like to move forward. On August second, that's when the resolution would come back to the council. Um, and when you would actually vote on whether to place the measure on the ballot for that August twelfth deadline. So i- it's a quick-moving timeline, but we've been busily working away this past year. Um, we are sort of coming to that decision point, and that's, you know, these are those next steps in order to, uh, move forward and have this happen and be on the ballot for a vote in November.
All right, thank you, Joy. And again, are there any questions from our council? All right. Are we ready to start our public comments? Okay. All right, we will now move to public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Staff will respond to any questions after everyone from the public has had an opportunity to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we have two speakers, one in person and one via Zoom. Uh, first, we have a representative from All-Star Cable Products Inc.
My name is Mary Vinagis, and my husband and I own All-Star Cable Products. We're distributor of electrical wiring cable, we're right here on Pioneer. We've been in business seventeen years, and we've been in Santa Fe Springs for most of that time. I just, I, mostly, it sounds like you've made your decision already. You ran this survey, will, will the tenants, will your residents go for it? Well, you know, if you ask Paul, hey, do you think we need this and we need that? And you're not going to have to pay for it, we'll just make rich, evil businesses pay for it. Of course, they're going to say yes. Who doesn't want better roads, more police department? Oh, we want for the kids, for the children. I think it's a con, you're taking money from me. My husband and I, we grew up very modest, we work very hard, and you know what? We have high sales, low employees, not because we want to, because we can't get people to work. They'll work a few weeks, a few months, and then they don't want to work. They call in sick because they're sick, their mom's sick, their girlfriend's mom is sick. And we're like, are you kidding me, really? We're paying warehouse guys twenty-two dollars an hour. Their skill set does not allow that, but we have to. So I think we should ask ourselves, why is California so expensive? Why is it so expensive? Why is everything so expensive here? You know, your tax here in Zenithy Springs, sales tax is ten point five, Almani two. In some L.A. places, it's nine point two five, nine five. Why, you know why? Because you put it on the ballot, it's for the kids, it's for the fire, it's for this. Yes, we want it, we want it, oh, now we're going to pay more. And most, even commerce is at ten point five. These are all poor areas, but they buy it, they want stuff, yeah. And they think other people are going to pay for it. Well, no, we're going to pass it on. You're right, triple net, go ahead, try to bill a tenant, all they're going to do is bill me. I have an office in Northern California and need the, like, new A.C. unit, it's been there thirty years. Guess who's going to pay for it? Me, I don't even own the building, I just rent. I'm going to pay for it, well, my costs are going to go up. Why is California so expensive? So I wrote a few things down, um, O.C. Register, the crippling cost of doing business in California. It reads, "California has imposed the nation's highest sales tax, the highest income tax, and yet remarkably, even it never seemed satisfied with current level, current levels of taxation." Somewhere else it said, "Indeed, California has many advantages over other states, but rather than using their strengths to facilitate an even greater economy, Califor- California politicians instead exhibit the tendency to take California advantages as a given to you, to tax us even more, to use us as California peak banks." You're talking about inequity, oh, I love that word, inequity. You know what, you work hard, you're going to make it. My husband dropped out of high school. I tell him, you're not the smartest person, but you know what? Every morning, he's at work early, because we can't get somebody else to come in early. This long weekend, three days, he worked every day, because we got a big order and we had to cut it all. People want to leave, right, a Fourth of July weekend, they want to leave right at five, right? They're working. So yes, we make a lot of money, but you know, it's not by accident. You want to charge accountants more, oh, why? Because they make more money, what's wrong with that? They went to school, they probably have two hundred thousand dollars in school loan that they have to pay back, right? So yes, they make a lot of money. People that make money So yes, they make a lot of money. People that make money, it's not by accident. But I'm gonna say one thing, I did look up some of the California Santa Fe Springs salaries that our employees are making. You make a lot of money for making a movie, a basketball player. I don't care, but if it's my tax dollars, that's when I care. So our fire captain, his total compensation is four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. He, his compensation is a hundred and twenty percent higher than the average fire captain. I guess we have another fire captain. I'm not gonna say his name. His compensation, it's four hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Excuse me. Over. Yeah, you went over your three minutes, but
You got my point, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Ramon Venkat. And the speaker will be via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
I got a speakerphone there, Bill.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Ramon Venkat, and I'm the CEO here at LaFell Manufacturing Company. And we are an aerospace, highly engineered components supplier to commercial aircraft, defense and space segments. We've been in business ninety-two years, of which almost seventy-plus years have been in Santa Fe Springs. So I have a couple of comments. One, kind of starting with the survey, some things that caught my attention. One of them is, there was a lot of comparisons between 2010, 2018 and 2022. Twenty eighteen seemed to be, sorry, 2010 seemed to be some golden years. And I don't know what's wrong between 2010 and 2022. The budget for the city back then was around thirty-four million. And now we are at about sixty-four million from a budget perspective. And, you know, things have only gotten worse. So that's just my comment from based on what the survey presented. Coming to the business tax side, I do have a couple of comments in terms of what all of us are facing here. And I think there was a valid question from a council member about, you know, if the proposal is seven million, what is it that the businesses are paying today? You know, I understand there are some inequalities, et cetera. One of the things that I'm, I think is going to happen is, you know, there is a radical monumental increase for all businesses. Doesn't matter whether you're a professional or an industrial business. And I think more than likely the industrial business is the one that is going to bear the brunt of this whole thing. And we are living in extraordinary inflationary times. For all businesses, hiring is a challenge. Any extra monies we have, we are trying to put it in paying the employees higher wages and bonuses in terms of retaining them. And this, this kind of a radical monumental increase is only going to make the businesses think about, why are we in Santa Fe Springs? I would rather want this, you know, I don't debate the need for the money, but I think the city should think about doing a gradual increase rather than this, you know, humongous two thousand, three thousand percentage increase for a lot of businesses. And also, this is a time when if, if there are monies surplus in the reserve, this is the time to probably use it too and, and try to use a gradual increase. Lot of us don't have the ability like a gas station to increase the price, and customers will still come and fill up the gas. We have long-term contracts with Boeing, Airbus, and we cannot go to them and say, you know, my, my taxes have gone up in the city and I want a price increase. It's a huge problem for a lot of us who are in business. So I just want, I think, the, the city council and everybody to consider these things and try to implement a gradual increase rather than a radical monumental increase to the businesses in Santa Fe Springs. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
All right, thank you very much. Now I will now close public comments. Does staff have responses to the inquiries brought forward by the public? Okay, does council have any questions or discussion?
Yes. You know, this is very hard to sit up here because I have both sides of, I have a business in the city and I'm also up here, which we're trying to do what's best for our city. So it gives us, gives me two different perspectives. We haven't like, Joe and our Councilman Zamora, Mayor Protem said, you know, we, it's our own fault that we don't raise our fees over thirty years. That's to us, that's just negligence on our part. But we tried to be a business-friendly city by subsidizing, by not trying to raise taxes, and I think tax is a very bad word for this. Do I think we need to figure out a fee? Yes, I do. But I don't know if it's these fees because this is, in my opinion, a lot to bear, especially with this time of a future recession, you know. Businesses are very hard to come by with employees. Fees are going up, gas. We can't allow our businesses to dictate our way of life. We have to do a better job of spending our money, budgeting our money, and putting it in places that are going to benefit our community. So how we vote on this, I don't know, but I just think that this is something we need to do, but I don't know if this is the numbers we need to do it at and the time, so.
Took some of my words already. It's true. It's, it's our own fault for being up here. I've been on the council the longest, and I can actually take blame for it, along with my other council members. We've always looked at, okay, well, we'll do it next time or we'll do it another day because we want to take care of our, our community. But it's true, I, how we have the speakers that said, the way it presented, the way the survey is, of course, every resident wants good, good policing, good roads, good everything, but at what expense? And I think we're very different. I think Santa Fe Springs is a very different city. We're not the typical city. Our city is mostly made out of our industrial residents. And do we need to do this? Of course, Jay said, we do need to do this. But we can't, and I know this sounds, we can't bite, um, help me out, bite the hand that feeds us in a way. We need to come up with the right numbers. We do need to do that. We need to be physically responsible financially. Is it the right time right now? I think it's hard. I mean, I'm in, I'm not in your business. I'm not in your business. I'm in the pharmacy business and I can't get employees to fill my store. I can't, I can't do that. Pay, everything is adding up. Do we need to do this? Yes. The numbers, I think we need to worry about what we're gonna do. But I said, we don't know what's, if we're gonna have a recession coming up or what's going on with everything happening. I think we do need to sit down with our community, our residential community, our industrial community, us, and figure out what we need to do, but I personally think that we might need to postpone this a little bit, only a year, just to see what our numbers and what the economy is going to be like this year. And in that time, I think maybe we can come up with better numbers. But I don't think right now is the time with the recession happening. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. Like I said, I don't have a business here in the city. I don't have your numbers. I'm in a totally different field, but I know what I'm dealing with. But that's just my opinion of just, I think we still need to work on it. Yes, we need to, there's a deadline, but we can always put this on when we feel it's right, but we need to do it right, though. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm also a business owner, and I kind of fall on the higher bracket of these things. And I think we can all agree that there is a need for this. Something has to be done. The, we do have an antiquated tax system for our business licenses. There is a need for the business community as well as residents, you know. I'm part of the business community, of course, you know, to part a fair share to do something like this. And I know that some of these, I started kind of crunching a couple of numbers up here, and some of the increases still with this Model Seven, that still has been the best model that has been come up with so far. They, we're still talking about a few hundred percent increase in some of these businesses. And, um, you know, we do have to do this. I want to do this right. I know that, you know, our consultants, everybody's been working, you know, our management team, finance team for a very long time to put this together. We have to do this. If we were to do something like this now and put it on the, the, the most, you know, the ballot coming up in November, we'd probably have to tweak this a little bit so we could do, we can have an incremental system, a gradual system, particularly for the smaller businesses, those that are not, you know, multi-million dollar companies. And, um, some of these, the multi-million dollar companies, they have hundreds and thousands of dollars worth of expenses too. So it kind of balances out a little bit there. So, um, I'm also on both sides, you know, our city does need revenue. And you kind of paint a picture where it's all for infrastructure, for the kids, for the community, everything else, you know, and it is. But then our residents are also paying your taxes for the same thing, not the business community, but our residents as well. So we could all agree that we do want, you know, we do need to increase this. If, I know that we're coming, it's crunch time, it's getting close to, you know, being able to put this on the ballot. If we could figure out a way to maybe have this incrementally set up, if we're gonna do it so quick, rather than having a few hundred percent increase, I think we might, let's see, we could probably work on that. I know that it's crunch time and, you know, consultants, you know, my hat's off to you for working so hard on this. But I think we do have to kind of ease into this. Just like in the boiling frog, you know, if you crank up the water nice and slow, it's gonna have a good old time. Just dipping in boiling water, it's gonna die immediately. So, that's all I've got to say about this. Thank you. Well, I have to throw that one in.
Thank you, John.
Um, yeah, just, um, I know there's, just to put out a couple of points just from hearing some of the speakers. And when we talk about, you know, when it comes to employees, it's sad to say that, yeah, a lot of people are struggling when it comes to finding good workers or even workers in general. I think, you know, probably because the world or our nation is lacking individuals as we speak. So when you look at the unemployment rate in Santa Fe Springs, we were at two point seven percent. Now we're at two point four percent. So if you think about it, or when it comes to the, you know, and if you guys want to look it up for verification, it's on the COG, Council of Governance. So you can find that information there. So that's pretty low when it comes to Santa Fe Springs in general. That's low in general, even when it comes to other cities. You know, so, you know, I can understand and it's great that, you know, people have family to depend on, and I know that it's difficult in general, but even when we look at the, you know, for the last couple of years, when you look at the land value. I mean, the land value has raised for these business owners, their, their land values are probably around, what, a hundred and fifty percent to a hundred and seventy-five percent, but no one's talking about that. You know, so you have to look at it. I mean, people are not struggling in our city. Yeah, we might be struggling when it comes to other things, but when it comes to other factors. But in general, I mean, this is thirty years plus that we haven't had this. So when you look at it, I mean, we can't even answer the question of how, how long it's been. Staggered system, I think that's what John was, you know, trying to, you know, talk about when it comes to smaller businesses. I'm in favor of a staggered system for smaller businesses. I'm okay with that. You know, just whatever we can do to help out, but all in all, when it comes to probably our top ten, top twenty-five, you know, sales tax producers, I mean, they're all doing pretty well. So I mean, you know, as you can see, a lot of them are not here to speak, and those who are, then, you know, at a hundred and fifty percent when it comes to your land value, I hope you guys bring that, I hope you guys bring that up too. We have certain, you know, companies in general that, you know, probably have, you know, we have one that has over a billion dollars of property assets in the city of Santa Fe Springs. The next one in line has about four hundred to five hundred million in property assets in Santa Fe Springs. I can keep going. And like I said, and you know, I'm not, you know, we just don't want to kick the bucket. If we wait more time, we're just kicking the bucket. And you know what? If we're true to what we, what we've done, and you know, another factor, you know, I brought up about Little Lake School Board to, to Joy, and they did a minimal campaign and they got, what, over sixty percent? If I'm not mistaken, Joy, you know, over sixty percent, they didn't do anything. So, you know, and then when you look at that in the past, when it comes to the sales tax in general, you know, when we passed the measure Y, you know, those who were supporting it, you know, strongly, I mean, did great when it came to their campaigns. So, I mean, people look at that, you know, in, in general, and they see that, hey, city of Santa Fe Springs is different. And I do agree with Councilmember Martin in saying that we are no comparison to the city of LA. That's true, but there is no other city like the city of Santa Fe Springs, and this is why we have to make the decisions instead of kicking the bucket. So overall, I know our mayor is gonna speak, but if I need to give a directive of a staggered system, if you guys are okay with that, I'll do that, you know, Model Seven, and give a staggered system for, for small businesses. I have no problem with that. If we can work that out before July nineteenth, I'm perfectly fine with making that directive. But I know that our mayor probably wants to say something, so either way, I know it's a difficult thing, but this is why we were voted in to make these difficult decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, council, for all your comments. And thank you for everyone that spoke today. I appreciate every one of you. And the businesses, yeah, I pretty much grew up with all of you. I know all of you by, when we were, we were just a little younger with all the, the grays and everything, but we, we still care about all of our businesses and our city. We want to see our city thrive. We want to see our city grow. We want to see our residents happy. We want to see our industrial happy. And I feel you. I had a cousin, the Duval Company, that used to have a business on Norwalk Boulevard in Santa Fe Springs, but they're no longer here because it was too expensive. So now they're thriving in, in another city. But I understand your frustrations, and I know that we've been going around and around trying to, to make this fit for you. And we are business friendly. We do care so much about you. Measure Y, we're supposed to take care of a lot of our needs. We had a deficit. We don't have a deficit anymore. We are doing well, but we still need infrastructure. We still need a lot of funding that we don't have right now. I asked Noah, if we don't do this, are we gonna have enough for our roads and he, right now? And he said, no, we're not gonna have enough. So we have to do something, like my colleagues up here said, we have to do something. Can we fix this? We still have time. Maybe we can work something out. It's been thirty years, and so of course, now we're going from here to here, so of course it hurts. So we can't do that anymore, council. We have to stay on top of things and make sure that we, we increase when there is a need to increase. We, maybe we can work on the numbers. Small businesses, yeah, the staggered system, I'm, I'm in favor of the staggered system, and maybe we can work something out with that. And the survey, you saw the survey, you reviewed it, we reviewed it prior to this. There, there's a lot of needs out There, there's a lot of needs out there and we need to make sure that, uh, those needs are met. And we want to work with you. So I, I want to see, as, uh, my colleague said, maybe we can work on the numbers and get them right so that we can all be happy with the decision that we're about to make at our, uh, future council meeting. So I am totally in favor of the, the staggered system for the smaller businesses. And, uh, if you have anything else that you need to address, you know, we're all, we, we have open door policy. We're all ready to speak to you. I spoke to some of our businesses, so please feel free to reach out to us before we, uh, put it on the agenda and make our decision. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, it may be helpful for staff, if you have some further direction on what you mean by a staggered system or how you would like that to look and, and small businesses, if you, as much detail as you can to help us.
Yes, sure.
If we can have our, our city manager explain that part of the staggered system when it comes to the smaller businesses, are you okay with that?
Yes, so, um, there's different ways if you can do it, you know, we, using Model 7, we have an amount for the industrial, uh, businesses, hearing that, I don't hear anything, there's any change there, and that's the per square foot. But all the gross receipts businesses, it sounds that they want a staggered amount, which you can delay, um, the amount of one year. You can delay it two years. You can start some amount the first year, go up a, a percentage the second year or a percentage the third year. So, um, we, we have different options and we can bring back different options to show you what that would look like. Uh, that, that's how we would do it. We would bring back, um, kind of phase it in over one, two, three years. We can show you the options and how that will look like using the Model 7, um, as, as our, our template.
So we would do a stagger, so let's say we take a five-year plan. We do from professionals to services and we break that up into how we would do it. If we take 40% and then every year we go, you know, 10% up to get to where we want, if we believe these numbers are the numbers that we want to choose, correct?
Yes, so we, we've used the Model 7 numbers, the endpoint, and we can have, uh, some options of one, two, three years to get to that point, um, and show you what that looks like.
But I think we have to know, are these num, are we comfortable with these numbers, the prices? Then we back it out into where, how, if we want to do gradually for the next five years.
Uh, I mean, three years is, is, is the max for me. Five years is too long. I mean, that's just kicking the bucket.
What numbers do you want?
The stagger, that's why if they can.
What numbers do you want? Are, are these price per thousand, are those the numbers?
Well, we're looking at our smaller businesses in general, so, I mean, we're going to start there.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming we're using the numbers that are in there as, as the end, as the endpoint.
As the endpoint.
Is, are those numbers at the endpoint, okay?
That's what I'm asking you. If, if they are, we.
Five cents per thousand, okay with the endpoint?
Yes.
I, I wouldn't know because I, I would want more of a understanding of what the actual cost is for it. I mean, I, I'm okay with, if we figure out what the end, how, how much we're going to start off with and go, that's fine. But I want to know where we're at with these, with other cities, where, where those prices are with other cities.
Other cities, like, do you want to name the cities?
La Marada, uh, Industry, something that's comparable to our type of city. So then we know that we're on, we're not going to lose businesses, the neighboring city, because they're, you know.
The only cities that are comparable to us, City of Industry, City of Commerce, City of Vernon. Those, La Marada's not. When it comes to business, community, no, doesn't even come close to us.
Let me, let me ask Eric, our consultant, is that something that he, if we get, give him the cities, can he make that happen relatively soon? Eric?
Well, those cities that were just mentioned were in our original study, so yes, I mean, you're going to compare, some of those are going to be per employee and not per gross receipt. But given the examples that were already in the, um, study, we could tweak those, yes.
So the answer is yes, we can get that information. When, when would you like, uh, like that back? I mean, it'd be a little ambitious to get it by next Tuesday, but is, is, is that possible, Eric? Or some others, another study session between now and our August 2nd meeting?
Yeah, great. I can probably burn the midnight oil for you.
So we're looking at Wednesday, Thursday, even if we got to do in the morning, you know, anytime, are you guys okay with that? Um, Thursday morning, does that give you enough time, Eric? Or do you prefer Wednesday? What do you want?
Well, I would think we're going to bring it back next Tuesday meeting, where you're talking about having a special meeting.
Don't have a special meeting because you're trying to bring back the three, because we don't want to be in that special meeting delay. And then all of a sudden, uh, you know, we didn't do anything.
You're talking about this week or next week? Where do you, where do you?
This week. Yeah, but the, the, when do we need the directive by August what?
Well, there's a whole other issue there. We have to bring you an ordinance. So tonight, we really need to have the, some directions that attorney can start working on the ordinance. And so, uh, we have, maybe ask Mark, does he have something to work with, with, um, what we were given now?
I, I think I have what I need, um, because for me to move forward, um, I need to know is that the general structure here, as opposed to the numbers, is, uh, what we're going with. So, um, so I can, um, draft based on this, I can start drafting tomorrow. Um, and ultimately changing any of these numbers, like going from, uh, you know, points from 75 cents to 60 cents. That's a really easy fix for me to make. Likewise, um, uh, inserting something about, um, about a phase in won't be, um, won't be a problem. It's just a matter of, at some point I need to, uh, you know, know what the, the phase in rates are. But I, I think, I think I have enough that I can, I can, you know, really get started on my part and get, get most of that. So it sounds like you have really two more regular meetings at which you can discuss the, discuss the rates with the information you're getting from Eric. So I, I, I think we're on good track.
Now, are we also, like, since we've been having the chamber involved in this, are they going to be involved in this process too? Or is this something that us?
Well, I think here, we're, we're going to come some, some options, um, and be more than happy to hear from, some comments on how to, to ramp up those options. But I, it probably, if it's okay with a, all of you, that we can have, um, Eric work on this. Will give us three days to get the agenda out for, for, um, Friday for a Tuesday meeting. So, um, I think that's a, that's pretty ambitious, but I think it sounds like Eric's ready to do it. And it's like we, our attorney's ready to start the ordinance. So I think that's reasonable.
So let's just say these numbers stay in place. You want three years, so you do 33%, 33%, 33% to get to them. Oh, well, they can give us a different, you know, breakdown, you know, when it comes to that. That's what they're going to do. They're getting, they can give us three options and we can go from there. I just don't want another general plan, you know, study to happen that we're just going to waste so much time and we fold and nothing happens for us when it comes to our community. So if that's the case, I mean, like I said, I'm willing to budge, but like, when I see the numbers, when I see what we're doing, if we're going to move our city forward, then we either got to stand right or, you know, or we kick the bucket.
One more comment for me. I know that, uh, we probably learned a lot from our general plan. It was a learning experience for, for all of us and we don't want to, well, kick the bucket, doesn't mean die. Maybe kick the can. We don't want to kick the can, you know, any, for that we have to. A three-year plan, sounds good. Five-year plan, I don't think that's, uh, too far stretched. But also one of my concerns is if, um, and I don't know if this could be one of the consultants or Eric, if we could also investigate some of these businesses that are currently paying for their employees, maybe $200 to $300 per year. And they're going to be winding up paying the $50,000 per year. Do we have anybody in that, uh, um, in that bracket? And then maybe, I don't know, like I said, you know, we got to do it incrementally and gradually and, you know, do some, uh, fair across the board. And of course, you know, small businesses, uh, are the ones that are going to be hurting the most, but we don't want to lose businesses either. And I don't want to lose Santa Fe Springs, so we could try to work on this.
Okay, are we all in agreement? Okay, do we have our directive? We're going to move on to the next item. Uh, before we do, can we take a two-minute recess, please? We've been here for about an hour and a half, two minutes. We're ready, let's get started. We have item number five, Council comments, and we're going to start with Councilmember Mora.
I, I think I already said almost everything. Thank you, everybody, for being here and we're going to work on this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Sarno? Uh, Mayor Protem Zamora?
Good job, Mr. Mora. Thank you for speaking for all of us.
All right, and I do have something to say. First of all, I want to thank all our businesses, uh, on, this is a separate note from a prior council meeting, and I, I just want to talk to my colleagues. So I'm going to get started. I wrote something so that I can be sure to say everything I, I would like to say. So, uh, in regards to the July 5th, 2022, item number nine, council members, I do believe we made a mistake and we made a mistake on what the June 7th directive was to be. So on June 7th, which was item number 11, which was to provide staff direction on the Parkway pine trees on Maidstone Avenue, the agenda directive can be replayed on the agenda video recording of June 7th. Item number 11, if you desire, we can replay it. The directive was as follows. Uh, our city attorney stated that the consensus, consensus on June 7th council meeting, the first directive was to move forward to steps needed to remove the pine trees on Maidstone as there is a pending project and some time constraints. The second directive was to ask the staff to survey other residential streets with pine trees. This will take more time. It will be a separate item than Maidstone. We need to focus on the Maidstone first in the triangle area. Uh, Councilmember Sarno asked if we could get an outside arborist. Mayor Protem Zamora requested to focus on Maidstone first. Then if needed, to hire an arborist outside to address the other project, so we can move forward with the Maidstone quickly. The third directive was a potential consensus is to review the tree policy. And the mayor, I said, we have a directive in place. So that was the directive. Maidstone Avenue Parkway Pine Trees, uh, so on July 5th, item number nine was to appropriate 20,000 from the general fund and approve amendment number one to West Coast Arborist for 44,140 to remove Parkway Pine Trees on Maidstone. Also, I confirmed with our Public Works Director, Noene Greta, that because this is an entire street project request, the process of going to the planning department was not needed. That process is needed when we are individual tree removal requests. So that's when there is an individual tree removal request. In reference to the Parkmead project in 1991, that project did not go through the planning department. There was no cost analysis, not even for the removal of the trees. No survey results. There wasn't even an agenda item with the discussion on the topic. It was only an agenda item stating to remove the trees and to use CIP funds. The Maidstone residence issue is dropping of excessive pine needles, cones, bleeding sap, negative impact, unsafe environment. A resident broke her foot, damage to the gutters, sewers, drainage issues, home insurance denials from their insurance agencies. It is, uh, our council, my colleagues up here says it is horrific, horrible, a burden and a potential health issue. This is a poor quality of life. A, a request has been made for me to show the pictures I took on Maidstone and an email from a resident on Maidstone be publicly read at our July 19th council meeting. I am asking for my colleagues that we bring back the July 5th agenda, item number nine, at our next council meeting. And let's get this done as we told our residents that we were going to do. I know that we all want to do what's right, so let's not wait any longer. I would like to make a directive tonight to bring back July 5th, item number nine, to our July 19th city council meeting for review. I'm sure that we all know that we received, uh, you know, an email. I received more, I received some phone calls. And I just feel bad because we did make a directive and they did hear it and we need to make it right. We, I, I like to hold myself accountable. If I do something that I feel wasn't right, I'm going to say we made a mistake. It's okay to make mistakes. We're human. But I just want to see if we can make the directive to bring it back and how far we, uh, discussion at our next council meeting.
I'm okay with bringing it back.
Um, I'm not for that. Uh, we've already voted again. Uh, if this would have went through policy.
What's policy?
What's policy?
Yeah, what policy?
Ask the tree.
I did talk, I talked to him today. I talked to No Way.
You know what the tree policy is?
Well, I'm asking you.
The tree policy is they go to the planning commission.
Yeah, I, No Way said that that was not needed because it is a street of trees. It's not an individual. No Way, would you like to address that question?
I can tell, excuse me, I can tell our policy is we do have a true removal policy on an individual basis. Those, those requests do come in, we do, um, arborist goes out, evaluates, analyze it based on the policy. We either support it or we, or we give them a letter to reject it. If that homeowner wants to appeal it, then they go to the, uh, planning commission. In this case, uh, similar to like what we did at Parkmead, it's not an individual tree. Uh, it's a series of trees causing damage to the street. So really, it, it's not on an individual basis, would be more on a, on a street basis.
But Parkmead was a, a CIP project.
Correct.
So you guys had already gone out there and surveyed the street to make sure it was worthy to be on the CIP project, right?
Correct. The trees are removed as part of the CIP project.
So they went out and they surveyed it to make sure it was worthy of a CIP project and that's why it got.
Well, you asked about the process of, uh, we, that we didn't go through the process.
We didn't.
We, they didn't need to go through the planning department for this. No, for individual.
No.
I asked him today.
The reason why Parkmead was done was because they surveyed it and they seen that.
I'm talking about Maidstone. I asked him, did we need to go through a process of the planning department?
Okay, well, I, I won't know.
Just let me finish. He said no.
I think what it, there's a little bit of miscommunication. He said no. Yes. The Parkmead project was a problem just like Maidstone. Exactly the same thing. There is a prob, there is a problem. People that were on the CIP brought it to the CIP. They went ahead and did the whole thing as a big project. It wasn't an individual project. It went through CIP. CIP looked at it, they surveyed it, then that's why it was done. This project, it's more or less, it's not an individual. It's a big thing. Like if CIP was open, it would be put under CIP and then they would do the survey, they would do the street, they would do everything all at once. That's where the difference is. Parkmead, Parkmead was a CIP. It was brought to their attention. They did it as a group and it was part of CIP. This could be a CIP project and it should be a CIP, uh, CIP project that will be done completely. It doesn't need to have the, the individual, um, appeal process. It'd be completely one big project. The whole street would be one project. So I think that's where the miscommunication is.
And it is going to be done.
Yeah, no, I know it's going to be done. Yeah, it's going to be done. But I think where the issue is, is you want it done now.
No, not me. The residents are asking because it was, it was already on the June 7th agenda.
I totally understand that. Yeah, you want it because you want to make right. We get it. All of us want those trees done. We all want those trees done. But I think where the miscommunication is and we're thinking is, like yourself, Jay, Joe Angel, Joe, John and me, we do want it done. But I think where the difference is right now, I, I'm, this is what I'm thinking. Correct me if I'm wrong. Why are we going to cut the trees and just cut the trees, then go back a couple of months or four or five months and then do the sidewalk? I think that's where the issue is. I think it's get everything together and do all at one time. Cut all the trees down, do all the sidewalk, do everything. So everything is done correctly at one time and it's done. And we don't have to go back four or five months or six months to do the sidewalk. Let's get, we can, try to rush this quickly, because you can't, so we get the trees down, do it correctly, make it look nice like Parkmead. Not just cut the trees down, because yes, we do need them down. No question asked. Thing is though, and we are going to do it, it's been approved. But I think where the difference is, is we're going to cut the trees down right now and then how long? No, I'm thinking, but we're going to do everything. Yeah, but I'm saying, no.
Just do things and just because.
No, no, I know we need the cost, but I'm saying we need all that together, put it together in a group and then get it done and move forward.
This is all about. We're just getting a cost to find out how much it costs us to do this job. We can't just go.
This is all about. We're just getting a cost to find out how much it costs us to do this job. We can't just go spend taxpayer money.
What, what job are you talking about?
Maidstone.
There's, you're talking about a CIP project that's already getting done on the beginning of the year and the tree removal is separate. We already got the cost of the tree removal.
There's a net additive to this. If you're going to remove the trees, it's going to take more work to do something on that street.
That work is already being completed with the CIP project.
That was not part of it.
Counsel, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor and Counsel. I just want to remind you, you are not redeliberating the item tonight. You are simply discussing whether or not to bring it back on the next agenda. So please, we need to limit the substantive issues and keep to, are, are you going to agree to, or is there going to be some consensus to bring it back for discussion at your next meeting?
Good, good. John?
And I will get to that in just a second, but I want to just back up a little bit. As Noe, when he brought it and he gave us a price tag for that one, there was a sense of urgency that we all gave. So he was just doing what his directive was and that's why it was there. I also want to know the true cost of this. And true, it's going to get done. Because those residents on that street deserve to have clean streets. They don't have to worry about needles falling in their pools or the houses. It, it is a trip hazard. It's going to get done. My only issue with this is that we don't know the true cost of this. And it's, I think our obligation, not only to the Mason residents, but to the entire residents of the city where they're, because you know, we're at transparent as hell. I mean, we pride ourselves with this. They didn't know where their money is going. So I think when you know the true cost of that, because the trees are going to come down, they're moving. And it's just going to be just a few months delay. We're not going to kick the can down the road on this one. It's just going to be just a few months, get there. But I think we need to know the true cost because our residents, our taxpayers deserve to know the true cost of, of this project.
Noe, how, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, how much time do you think you can, you need for us to get a true cost?
We're looking at hopefully getting the consultant to give us the cost in a month from now.
In a month? All right. So you guys are okay? You guys want to bring it back? September? It's two months?
Well, when, when we have the cost, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, when, when they bring the cost back, yeah. I mean, it's not, I mean, he's telling us a roughly September, but.
No, he's telling us August, one month. So I'm just saying September. Yeah.
We've been talking to the consultant about the urgency to get a preliminary cost on this. So we feel comfortable telling you we can get it in a month.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that? I mean, it's, it's a month, you know, a month and a half. You guys can do it at the last meeting if you want in September. So that gives them enough time. Yeah. But, but this is where we fail. We don't give a timeline. If you notice, a lot of our mistakes that have happened in anything we've done, there's no timeline. We have to give a timeline. So that's why I'm at least trying to say, you guys want to compromise there. There's a timeline there. We can do it at the end of September. It's just giving them a timeline. If they don't have it, then they can just tell us, hey, where they're at. I mean, the, the, the first meeting of September, they can come back and just say, hey, this is where we're at. We're going to be able to bring this back to you at the end of the month. If not, hey, we, we need October. That's it.
Didn't we do that at the last council meeting?
We did, but guess what?
So now we're changing it.
Yeah, it's a directive though. All, yeah, all of our directives have just been going in circles.
Because, and the mayor, and I commend you again, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? I'm telling you that we need a process. That's why we're up here just not organized because we, you are wanting something done tomorrow because you told a certain amount of people.
Not, not I told, we told.
No, I didn't tell them.
Yeah, the directive was what I had stated.
So if.
I know you don't want to hear it, but that's what it was.
We wouldn't even be in this conversation right now. So if we would have told them the right way to do it, go to Noe, if Noe tells them, we deny you. They go to the planning commission, they deny them. It comes back to us. We make that decision and then we make it happen. But that's not what happened. We can't just jump past everything that we try to do to make it. That's why we have policy in this city.
I wa, I wanted to, I wanted to just say for the record that this is not something that just came on board when I got on council. This, as Juanita stated, this has been a long, it's been a decade. It's been that long. They have come and come and come over here and nothing's been done. So please, with all due respect, this is not something that we just jumped the gun and brought it in. It's something that has been happened when you were mayor, when you were mayor, and when you were mayor. I am trying to do what's right by the directive that we gave on the June, the first council meeting in June. That's why I said, if you'd like, we can listen to the video, the video recording. I mean, apparently that's not going to make a difference to you. So yes, it's not, but it, but we gave a directive. And so now we're going to, Mayor Protem Zamora spoke to Noe and he said August. So go ahead, Noe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify something. When you say true cost, let's just clarify what that is. It's going to be an engineer's estimate based on the plans. If you want a true cost, I have to wait till I bid this job and I give you the exact true cost.
An engineer's estimate is a two crossroads, Noe.
Well, well, it, it is and it is.
It isn't. It's technically.
Have contingency.
It's an estimate. It's an estimate of what we believe that cost.
Well, in, instead of saying the true cost, then maybe we can say our true estimate. All right? Engineers estimate. We can do that.
The best educated engineers.
On the final plans. It'll be based on, I think, the ninety percent plans that we'll be getting at that time.
So you guys okay with the timeline at looking at the end of September or even October? I mean, we're just giving a timeline. Doesn't mean they have to do it. It's just giving them a timeline that when we're expecting at least some kind of answers.
Whatever you guys want to do. As long as that timeline is, just give us a true, yeah.
A true timeline? A true timeline?
Well, you just said August. So is it?
No, it's September. September, August is a month.
And we're going to hold them to September. But if it doesn't happen.
They, they come to us and tell us.
Come to us and tell us that, okay, we, we're going to take it to the next meeting or when they get it.
And it's just them giving us information. That's it.
That's all it is, information.
Okay. All right. So we have the directive in place. Let's stick to it. And I just don't want to see the residents having to wait another ten years. We're up here now. We can make it happen. Okay. Go back to my notes. I am the last one to talk. I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.